Welcome everyone to a meeting between, a joint meeting between the Provo City School District. And also the Provoc Municipal, Provocity Municipal Council. So we will start with a roll call. I'm Melanie Hall, Board Vice President. And then we'll just go with Dave Harding.
Dave Harding, Provost Council.
Hey Karen.
Provo Municipal Council.
Yeah Karen, do you want to?
You're muted. Yep, Karen Tabahi, Council Staff.
Okay Bonnie.
Bonnie Tautkus, Executive Assistant.
Nate.
Nate Bryson, Board Member.
Sergeant Orgill.
Sergeant John Orgill, Provost Police Department.
Rebecca.
Rebecca Nielsen, Board Member.
George, I can't remember if you went already.
I did.
Okay Dixon.
Dixon Hall, Provost City Mayor's Office.
David Walter.
David Walter, Provost City Redevelopment Agency.
Jennifer.
Jennifer Partridge, Board Member.
McKay.
Hey Jensen, Board Member.
Shannon.
Shannon Ellsworth, Council Member.
Cliff.
Cliff Strachan, Council Staff.
Wayne.
Wayne Parker, the Provost City Chief Administrative Officer.
Julie.
Julie Rash, Board Member.
And Keith.
Phil Superintendent, Scruffy Superintendent.
All right, well welcome. We're going to turn the time over to Mr. Walters to discuss, a discussion regarding possible future redevelopment areas.
Thank you. Before I start that, there are two quick items that I wanted to kind of bring particularly to the board's attention. So item number one is you are aware that we are in the process of looking for a developer to redevelop this site. On this site, however, there are a couple of monuments, one of which concerns the school district as it points out that this site was the site of the former high school for Provo, as well as there's a monument on the upper side about Captain Powell and unfortunately losing his life in Hanoi. So I just kind of wanted to bring that to your attention and to ask if the board had, you know, if we can, if we need to move it from its current location to somewhere else on the site as the site redevelops. If that would be of a concern to you as we look forward.
And just to clarify, do you mean the city center site?
Correct. So along the 100 South Corridor, right there, close to the corner of the fire station, there's a sign, a monument, a marble monument that recognizes this as the site of the former high school. And then on the other side of that, there is a tribute to Captain Powell. Who was an Air Force pilot and lost his life in Hanoi. And the graduating class, I believe it was of 1956 erected that monument. So we have not finalized a developer nor a plan yet, but if it does become necessary for us to move that, we wanted to make you aware that that might happen and to gauge your, as long as we moved it to somewhere else on this existing block, if that was going to be problematic for the school board.
Is there anyone that wants to speak about that?
I think history's good. You know, obviously where it can be seen, so you know, moving it towards city property, it's, it's more likely to be seen closer to a road, closer to Main Street, but I mean, it's not really our call. But I think that yes, the, a school class and and it was, it's, it's sort of a municipal monument in its location. And we applaud any efforts to maintain the history, but we're going to need to be flexible.
Any other comments? Okay, seeing none. Do you want to keep going, Mr. Walters?
Sure. The other item real quickly I wanted to introduce was Senator Harper and Representative Winter passed a bill SB 6001, which would allow redevelopment agencies to add two years on to their project areas as a result of COVID. So we have not opted for this as yet. We're kind of exploring it. It's relatively new. I don't know if Ms. Bryant is aware of this or not. Certainly before we take any action, we'll inform her and you as well. I think it's important for us to note that if we do go through this process, we would not undertake to add to, for example, the Mountain Vista project area, which we've already committed to here that we're not going to expand or to extend. The other one that comes off real quickly is the one that's the Financial Center, Financial Services Center, which is primarily designed bank building. I had the opportunity to come before the board a few months back and make a presentation. Thank you for your participation and your partnership. And in view of that, we would commit not to extending those, but we would look at the possibility of extending maybe the mall project area and a couple of others, but any action that we would take, we would inform you in advance of that. So again, that, that's out there. The Utah Redevelopment Association is trying to gauge the level of interest in the member agencies about whether or not they're going to participate. We just wanted to let you know that that's there and that we will be looking at it in future. So as a kind of a ancillary discussion to that, we do have project areas that are coming off. We wanted to, you know, we have worked with you in the past to talk about a couple of others, primarily the golf course and the Riverwoods project areas, which we appreciate that. But if there were any other areas of the, the city that the school board had interest in, we'd like to get your input as we look at other areas. I think we've had a good partnership in Mountain Vista. I think we've been very successful partners in the downtown area, but if there were other areas of the community that the council and the board felt were in need of redevelopment, that this might be an opportune time for us to at least start looking at that and considering that as we move forward. We're aware of the limits that are in your regulations and guidelines. We want to be cognizant of that, but we also want to give you the opportunity to kind of weigh in and see if there were areas that were more concerned to you than others. So thought we would give the, the school board and the council a chance to weigh in on that.
I think we're, we're always more interested in, in things that wouldn't happen otherwise, for sure. And, and oftentimes it's difficult to weigh that. All of them say, oh, we're not going to do it unless, but, but given our, our restrictions and and which, which we've been wise, but we're also been very respectful and, and also appreciative of your professionalism. Speaking of you, David, and, and vetting these, these things and helping us. We certainly, you know, want to do our own financial analysis, but but, but we're, we're we want to improve our community and we see our role in that. And I'm sure that Nate might have some things. I saw Jennifer's hand as well for a second.
Go ahead Jennifer.
Yeah.
Okay. So my question is a little different than what you asked, David, but my concern, I guess, like when I was at the mall earlier this week, I was thinking about it. I know that that is currently an RDA area and I'm wondering, are they receiving those tax increment benefits right now, even though no progress has been made to redevelop that area? Or does that not kick in until the redevelopment happens?
So no, they are because there were some significant improvements that were made after the project area was adopted. So before there were, it was undeveloped and then also there were some mobile home parks that were on the site that were relocated. So when the mall took ownership and that property developed, then there was tax increment that's being generated. So that currently does flow back to the owners of the mall. I can't tell you that they are evaluating proposals right now. They've approached us about the possibility of changing a portion of the mall to, to allow for residential development and for some office development. For a variety of reasons, right now that that can't happen, but they are looking at ways to make that work. So.
Are they obligated to have to accomplish so, a certain amount of redevelopment because we gave them this tax increment financing? Or can they just sit on it forever?
At this point, I think they can sit on it for a while because they, the malls developed under the obligations of both the redevelopment plan and the joint development or the disposition and development agreement that they entered into with the city. So Brixton did not directly do this, but they were, they assumed the obligations and the the tax increment was one of the benefits of assuming that obligation. So right now they're maintaining it as the mall, which is what they were required to do. So that, I mean, the quick answer is they're not necessarily obligated. Certainly if they were to come to us and say, hey, we want you to extend this area, we would want to look at, you know, well, what are you going to do? You know, we're not going to just extend it so you can continue to accumulate the tax increment. There obviously has to be some sort of benefit that's going to accrue to us and to you. You being the school district, of course, but so right now they do get that, they do get the tax increment. They have met the obligations of the disposition of development.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Nate, did you have something? No. Okay, to piggyback on that with what Jennifer just asked, does that also apply to the mix? Even though that feels like it hasn't gone very far?
So, yeah, so the mix, we've been fortunate to learn that they're looking, they've found a partner that they're looking to work on that. And so that they have submitted some additional plans and they're looking to move forward with that. So, I mean, they're not going to get anything out of it until something develops on that site. So in that case, yeah, unless something changes on the site and they put something else, they're not going to get any tax increment out of that. So for them to, to rate, realize any benefit from the interlocal that you agreed to, they have to put something else up. And that something has to be greater than the base year of the value. The value of the base year development that was on the site. Probably said that wrong. Does anybody have any questions?
Dave Harding.
Thank you. I just wanted a clarification. I think it's more specifically about the mall, but just, just so I'm clear, when you talk about they're, they're receiving tax increment, that's not for anything that's happened in the last handful of years as they've looked to potentially renovate or whatever. We're talking about tax increment that was committed.
Back in 1998.
98, so 22 years ago, they're still reaping some of those benefits, but it's, it's nothing from what they've done recently. Okay, thank you.
That's it.
Do we know where the progress is at with the, the, it was an apartment building that, apartments that were right by the front runner station?
The Mill Race, yes ma'am. So we did, there's actually an item that will potentially be on the council's agenda on the 15th, which will allow them to assign. What they need to do is in order to take advantage of some of the opportunity zone benefits as well, because this project is in an opportunity zone as well as a redevelopment project area. They created a, a new partnership and they like, it's made up of the same entities that the Mill Race Partners is made up of and they want to work to assign that. They did have a little bit of difficulty with some of their financing as they went through this process. The banks asked them to scale back their opening stages. And as they faced this development, they're still going to build the same amount of work, the same amount of apartments, the same amount of office space, the same amount of condominium space, but because of the COVID, the scale backs and restrictions on, on the different financial institutions, those institutions have asked them to adjust their phasing schedule so that they'll not build as many units as they initially would have liked. So, but they have come back to us, they've worked through the process, they've shown us a new phasing plan. They're asking for us to approve an assignment agreement between the old partnership, which was the group that was committed to build it, and this new entity that they're creating. All the same players, but just structured a little differently to be able to take advantage of the opportunity zone tax credits, tax benefits.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
Julie and then McKay.
I'm just wondering about Duncan Aviation. Where, where are we with that? And then I have a follow-up question.
Sure. So Duncan Aviation is open. They started to accumulate the tax increment. It's kind of an interesting one in that they're getting it on the, not the land, because the land is still owned by the city and leased to them, but on the improvements that they're making. So there was a little bit of negotiating with the county on how that was to, to be accounted for. And so I think we're in that process. But yeah, we've started that.
And then, and this might be a, a question as much for, for the superintendent and/or Stephanie as anybody, but there's, there's some interest from Amelia Earhart, the administration there to maybe approach Duncan by way of maybe, you know, some kind of small sponsorship, not even a sponsorship, but, but something you know, that, that school out there, we're in Title I area and, you know, we're talking.
I think Duncan would be receptive to something along those lines. I mean, they, when they came before the board and talked, they, I think they shared the idea that it's nice to work with the local community. They want to be a, a good partner with the local community and.
And, and that's kind of my memory too. And so I'm wondering if we're at the point that, that maybe there could be a conversation. I'm not talking a lot.
No, no, no. I, I get that. We'll be happy to arrange that.
Okay, so is that something?
It might be something that might be a little more easier to arrange after the start of the new year, but yeah, we would.
Right, and.
Work through you with the administration of Willie Earhart and kind of sit down and talk. We can do that.
Okay, fantastic. Yeah, I, I know that, that, that has been raised at, well, by me at a, at a couple of their meetings and so.
Yeah. My recollection is that Duncan kind of had steered the direction of their conversation more towards the high school students and the
Right.
and, you know, being able to work in the trades and what they do out there, interesting students in that type of work, but I, I, I hope, I don't think that they would be. I think they'd be open to talking to elementary schools as well.
Okay, and it would almost be, especially in terms of the high school, you know, just almost a token, you know, sponsoring a couple of events. I, I don't know where it would go, but we aren't talking massive amounts of, of funding by any stretch. So, okay, perfect. Thank you.
Yes ma'am.
McKay.
David, I was just wondering if, if you've done any work on Representative Nelson's tweaking of the redevelopment rules, going with a state average and, and or have you contacted anybody? Have you?
I have, I have not. I know that that was a recently brought up to the committee that for interlocal or for intergovernmental entities, and that was discussed briefly there and there was some conversation. I, my recollection is that didn't quite pass that, that committee, but they are going to take a look at it and see. We, I just knew that it happened. I hadn't, I've read the bill, but I haven't really.
Yeah, it, it didn't, it didn't pass the interim committee, but it's likely to show up in the session.
Yeah, it'll probably come up again.
And given that Provo is, is, you know, pretty average when it comes to tax rates and everything, I don't know if it's going to hurt us, you know, that drastically. I think it's a fine idea to have the developer pay for the financial analysis. But was just wondering if, if you would inform the council or, or
I had talked with.
That is detrimental or, or.
I, I just, I had shared with administration that that was a possibility. And so we're just going to keep an eye on it as it moves forward. Probably end up talking with Ms. Bryant about where we're going to fall in that particular spectrum. So.
Okay. Great.
All right. Are there any more questions for Mr. Walters? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to number four, a discussion regarding crosswalks and safe routes. Jennifer, do you want to start that?
Thank you for allowing me here today.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd love to do that. So recently I've been talking with different parents in some of the school boundaries that I represent, and they have brought up concerns with crosswalks near their school or other things that they're worried about the safety of the students who walk and bike to school. And so I wanted to first share with all of you on the council, who may not be aware about the Safe Schools Program. And then talk a little bit about where we're at with that and how we can improve our communication between the district and the city on that. And I've invited Sergeant Orgill here to do that as well. First though, let me share my screen. Just want to share. And this is from the Safe Routes website. And every school is required to have a Safe Routes Plan. And there is a school community council, every school, and that comprises the principal, at least one teacher representative and several parents that are elected to be on that. And they have several responsibilities on that school community council, but one of their responsibilities is to look at the Safe Route Plan every year and to review it, to make any updates that they see might be needed. And then those updates are then submitted to the district. And then as you can see there on that third little paragraph here, all involved parties include the school, the district, the city, the county, and even UDOT. And so a lot of the things are the same year to year on the Safe Routes. What they do after they have that is then the, the principal share that with the families so that they know the safest way to walk and bike to school. But the things that have been a concern at the different schools throughout our district, I know most of our schools have something that they would like to see addressed. And there's just been concern that they don't know what's happening once they submit that, if the city's even getting it, things like that. I'm going to now turn it over to Sergeant Orgill. And he's going to share with us a little bit from his perspective as the officer over all of our school resource officers and his involvement with this. And I think he will give us some information that will help all of us understand it a little better. Go ahead Sergeant.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I appreciate the opportunity to, to be here and talk with you today. This is an issue that has been on the forefront of my mind. Just about every day I fill in as a crossing guard, sometimes two and three times a day. And so I'm aware of the concerns. I think probably many of you are also getting you know, concerns brought to your attention. So this is an important subject that we need to kind of address. There have been some areas within the Safe Routes process, I think, at, at this local level that I think can be improved. And I just want to say initially that, that we've made some steps and some strides in that direction, working with the school district and the city engineering department. And law enforcement and the city leadership to, to establish these routines that maybe have not been taking place as they should in the past. If I could share my screen, I would like to do that as well. And I'd like to start by, this is the city or the Utah code. This was effective July 1st of this year, so it's really relevant and fresh. 53G 4402. And down here in section 17, it specifically mentions kind of how this is intended to work. It says, "The local school board shall establish for each school year, a school traffic safety committee." They'll implement this section. And that committee is composed of a representative from the schools within the district, the PTA, the city or county, state or local law enforcement, and then state or local traffic safety engineering. And, and basically there to receive recommendations and concerns from parents, community councils and those groups, and then make decisions about those. If I can, you've, you've kind of touched on it a little bit already Jennifer, but this Safe Routes Utah site also provides some good information. As I prepared these remarks, there, there is conflicting information. And so that may be where some of the, the struggles have come from. It's important to kind of read through all this information and understand exactly who's responsible for what and, and I think that's helpful. If you go to the Safe Routes Utah site and then I'll click over here on school mapping. It will give you some options. Couple of different places here. There's a quick start guide and that's just enough to get you in trouble. It's kind of a summary for someone that's already familiar with the program, but it doesn't provide enough information to appropriately administer the program. If we go over here to the Safe Routes Planning Guide, that's where we end up getting a little bit better information that we can actually use. As we scroll down here. Go down to, this is important here. The goal of the Safe Routes Plan is to increase the number of students walking and biking safely to school. That, that safe word comes into play throughout this entire brochure. This right here is basically the plan and the process in a nutshell. It specifies that you need to identify a Safe Routes Team. That team will then take an inventory of the school's walking area, which usually is about a two mile radius. They are then to create a safe routing map. And this software is all provided on this site. They create a text description of the safe routing map. And then these next steps are where I feel like it's really important that we pay attention. They are to seek input and feedback from outside resources. So places like engineering or law enforcement can provide some insight to whether or not a requested crosswalk is feasible. And there's a lot that goes into that. That, you know, it's beyond, beyond me. The engineers have, you know, resources and pages and pages of information that they have to go through in order to qualify certain locations for crosswalks. And then the next step is to submit that Safe Route Plan to the District Traffic Safety Committee. And if we go back to that code again, remember that's comprised of members from the schools and the PTA and law enforcement and the city engineers and the city. And the next step is seven, to revise the plan based on any input that they receive. So just because something might be requested doesn't necessarily mean that it's going to be approved. Maybe there's some modifications that need to be made. And then again, once that plan has finally been approved, step eight is to distribute that to the parents. I think, you know, it's important to involve those other groups in those decision-making processes. Because we can provide information that's helpful. So that we're not submitting something and then waiting to hear back. You know, it could have been answered in one of those community council meetings. If, if you invite the city engineer or law enforcement to participate, we can just say, you know, that's, that's not feasible in this location, or maybe we could consider another option. Also on this page, it talks about some dates, some deadlines. It mentions April 1st. That's really probably too late. In talking with the city engineers, they've, they've made it clear that they'd prefer to have these recommendations by the end of the calendar year in order for them to actually make these changes in time for the next school year. So that's another piece of this that I think is, is important. And then again, these, these routes need to be evaluated every year. I think it's been some time since many of them have been evaluated. I'm, I'm aware of several locations where, you know, if we, if we put in a crosswalk or a sidewalk, we could potentially eliminate a crossing at certain locations, or sometimes we have crossings where there's no kids crossing at all. And I'm sure there's other places where we really do need another crossing and we're just not aware of that. So it is an important process. We're fortunate that we have a school district that's all contained within one city. It should help to make the process a little bit easier as long as we all kind of communicate and take part in this process the way that it's designed to be. And I think we're taking steps, like I said, in that direction. And I think we're taking steps, like I said, in that direction. And one thing that I would like to do is to meet with each of those community councils and maybe provide some training, because I think there's maybe some room there for them to understand the process a little bit better. As we all come to kind of understand the process and commit to following the steps that are there, I think we'll come to a better resolution. Are there any questions or other concerns that I can help address with that process?
I had a quick question. Have you had conversations with bikewalk people in Provo? I mentioned them because they've done a lot of work on certain routes, desired patterns that they're trying to encourage for bikers and for pedestrians, and I imagine that they have some thoughts and ideas about the schools in particular.
Yeah, I have not heard anything from them. That's an interesting point. I know that there, when it comes to other groups other than the schools, there may be some other regulations that I'm not aware of. But that would be interesting to have chat with them and see what input they would have too.
George, I know that Bikewalk gets involved with the PTAs every year. In September, there's always a Bike to School Week, and they help sponsor that and give prizes and things like that. But as far as I know, I don't know that anyone's thought to coordinate them with the Safe Routes aspect of schools. So I think that's a great thing we could look into and see if they would have.
Yeah, they're really good. They kind of specialize in sort of the local street knowledge of where places to go, where's the best route, and, you know, where are some of the danger spots? And they're constantly, they're very vigilant about that citywide. But I'm sure, and Mary Wade, who's the, I think she's still the head of it, is also, not only is she a schoolteacher and a mother, she has, I'm sure, quite a bit invested in this question particularly. So I think she would be a great resource.
Very good.
I do want to add a few things I've also learned this week. And then if there's any questions after that, we can take some more questions. So I spoke with Alex Judd, who is the Assistant Superintendent over the elementary schools. And he said he, in realizing that we need to better take the steps from when it's done at the school to how does it get to the city and get evaluated, and then how do we get back to the schools? He's created a form that then they can put that together, and that district committee can look at, and they can easily share it with the city. And he asked all of the schools to have their requests in by November 30th. When talking to Shane Winters at the city, the city engineering, and they would like it so that in December and January, they can be looking into things, because that goes best with their fiscal year. So even though that form online said by April 1st, the deadline for our schools is November 30th. And then they can just look into things and decide by March and be able to get back to the schools by March. And I think that's where some of the disconnect has been in the past. I know I've talked to, for example, Provo Peaks is very concerned about the crosswalk on Center Street, right in front of their school. And there are a lot of cars who come through the roundabout headed west in the mornings that may not even recognize that they're in a school zone because of the nature of the roundabout, and they go through there pretty quickly. And when I've talked to one of the parents on the school community council, as well as the principal, they say they've requested some changes, and neither of them seem to know what, if the city was even looking into it or not. And so that communication sounds like Alex at the district, Sergeant Orgill, they're all working to improve that communication with that. So, let's see. And then the other thing Sergeant Orgill brought up with me when we were talking is just, we are short on crossing guards. That's a problem throughout the district. And the police officers, along with our schools, are trying to work to find at least some backups, some parents that can be on call and things like that. But just for everyone's information, if you can encourage anybody to sign up to be a crossing guard, that would help as well. Any, yeah, go ahead, David. Harding?
Thank you. Board Member Percher, I appreciate your tenacity on this. I think it was 13 or so years ago, I was on a school community council. And, you know, there's a number of things that you have to tackle throughout the year, and we kind of got to the end of some of the, you know, the others. We had cleared those off the table, and it was like, well, you know, we should be working on this Safe Routes to school. And so we really dove in, put a lot of effort into it, and kind of our final meeting of the year, because we would end when the school year ended. You know, we kind of packaged this all up, sent it off, and never heard about it again. And, you know, the next year, we kind of worked through everything else, and we even did some fall counts and did some spring counts. And we sent it off at the end of the year, and I think it was kind of four years in a row, and just it was a black hole, never heard anything back. And so even as I've been more involved with the city, it seems like every time this item issue comes up, it's the same complaints that we experienced, and it's the same thing that you're describing here. So I appreciate your tenacity on this, Sergeant Orgill. I am thrilled to hear about what you're talking about, getting the process in place to facilitate that communication. Because I'm sure we suggested some things that were bad ideas, but we just, there was no communication. We didn't know any better. We got no feedback at all. And so I really feel like if we can follow through and get this to the point where that communication is happening, it will benefit our schoolchildren, because they will be safer in getting to school. So I just wanted a big thanks to everyone who's been involved with this, and I hope we get it over the finish line this time.
So Jennifer, sorry.
Sorry, I was just going to say that this is one of those problems. It's just, it's not something that any one group can solve. It's got to be a group effort, and we've got to communicate. Good points. Thanks.
I can just add quickly, I agree with what David just said. The challenge on this from the school's perspective, which I've been hearing from many of those last few years, hasn't been an understanding of the process upfront. It's the lack of knowing what, how their application was received, and how the decisions that were made, how those decisions get communicated back. So I'd like to suggest that maybe we work, and then John, John Orgill has been such a help to the district. But I'm just going to offer that, as, you know, as the person who's running the district theoretically, maybe the report comes to me, and then I can distribute it. I just didn't think there's something on the backend that's missing. And I heard that verified with what Councilman Harding just said. So maybe we can think about a system for getting the report back in a more consistent manner.
Yeah, I think that's critical. I think, you know, it's got to come to that district committee at some point. And that's where I think the ball has maybe been dropped in the past. That just has not been happening. And that's probably where the communication is not getting back either, because that meeting has not been taking place. And we need to make sure that that's going on. So that's good advice.
And something that Alex Judd told me is that Shane Winters at the city engineering, he's relatively new to his position, and he's committed to making this process better. So it sounds like maybe some of the problems in the past, you know, we've got a new person now, and this could be a good way to change things. So Dixon?
Yeah, I just wanted to report that we did have a meeting on September 23rd, in which Alex Judd was there with Sergeant Orgill and Captain Beebe with the Provo PD. Janally, hi. To start this even earlier, and again, I just wanted to report, I thought that was a good meeting. Alex had made some suggestions, and so I think the ball is rolling, and it's just continuing that communication earlier and often to, again, evaluate if there are any changes that need to be made. And I imagine there'll be a follow-up meeting here in the near future from that September meeting, and just wanted to report that also.
Let me just comment too. I think Dixon, sorry Julie, let me just, I think Dixon makes a really good point. Part of the challenge for us is that if we get the recommendations too late in the school year to do anything, we have no ability to count the actual students who are coming to various points and attempting to cross city right of way. And that forces us then into making, having discussions and changes in August and September when patterns are already established. And again, so the summer months are really important for us to get all of our work done before school gets out in the spring so that we can evaluate exactly what's happening in terms of walking and biking patterns. The other thing that's really important is that we have to get these decisions made before our budget gets set for the year. We operate on a July 1 fiscal year, and so if a request for a guarded crossing, for example, comes up, it's about $15,000 for us to install the crossing, and then it's the cost of a crossing guard all day long, every day during the school year. And if we can't put that into our budget calculations early enough, it becomes really, really difficult for us to implement that during the fiscal year. And so that's one of the reasons why we've encouraged this process to happen, you know, around the end of the calendar year, or the very beginning of the next calendar year, so we have time to adjust and make budget requests going into the process, so it can be evaluated along with every other budget request. So that's one of the reasons why we try to do this early in the game as opposed to later in the school year.
Go ahead, Julie.
Hey, I haven't heard anybody say anything but, what, agreement with this conversation that something needs to be done, and I appreciate that. I just think I want to emphasize some of the things that I've experienced. We've been having this conversation, as Dave illustrated, pointed out, since I've been on the board, and never really seen much progress. And I understand that we've already acknowledged that, but a couple of specific instances that have been happening in my area, we've got a couple of spots where sidewalks are not even passable. So we talk about safe routes. It's not even just a safe route. It's, we need a section of sidewalk fixed. We've got kids, whether it's a safe route or not, over here that have to walk to school. So they have to go. We have many places over here that don't have sidewalks at all. And I think the safe routes is fantastic, and if we had some of that taken care of, it would solve the problems in the community. But I know we have an issue at Sunset View with an area that we're ready to fix, but it connects to a city sidewalk. And Mark has reached out to the engineers a few times, and just nothing. And so we can't do what we need to do, because that's not happening. And so I only raised this to just illustrate, this is an urgency in some areas more so than others. Very, very specific, you know, these plans absolutely need to happen in the big planning. But some of these specific instances, we really, the time that we've already spent, I've gone in as a private citizen and entered a request into the database for sidewalk repairs. I'll enter that. I've done it multiple times. I get an email a few days later saying, okay, your problem's taken care of, and I guess that means it's in the database, so it's taken care of. I've yet to see one fixed. I take pictures, I send it in, and so I think, I don't know, I think this just kind of backs up the need, the need for some of this. And whether there's a safe route or not, I've got six-year-olds that are walking to school. And so it's, I think it's past time on some of this to just take these, the master plans, of course, for these specific instances and get them fixed, get them taken care of.
Appreciate that, Julie, and I think, you know, clearly we see that the same way. We have allocated about a half a million dollars a year for sidewalk improvements. We probably have a $25 million backlog on those. Again, areas where either sidewalks have fallen into disrepair, or in cases where subdivisions were built without sidewalks. And so we've, you know, we've struggled with coming up with sufficient funding and prioritizing those, just like you do with your capital improvement needs, and trying to figure out exactly how to make that happen. So again, part of it is appropriating sufficient money, and part of it is ensuring that we're doing the right thing and the right priorities in the area. But we do spend all of that money and more every year on sidewalk improvements around the city.
And I thank you for that way, and I know there's a big list, and I know, we know as well, there's never enough money.
Right.
Never enough money. I think one of my concerns, and this has come up at a city council meetings too, when we've gotten together, I think there just, there's nobody from the city that spends any time in Southwest Provo that I can see. And so these things fall off the radar screen, maybe because, like, there's nobody. There's nobody over here. And so, yeah, I guess I would make a humble request that I have made multiple times before, that Southwest Provo and our schools, we've got three Title I schools over here, maybe get some more eyeballs on them, so that we, it's not just me and these kids that are seeing sidewalks that aren't passable. But I do, I appreciate everything that's been said, honestly. I know this isn't just a problem over here, but it's also a problem over here, I guess is what I want to say.
Understood.
Thank you.
Mr. Harding? You're muted.
Thank you. In our meetings, there's a feature in Zoom where you can, like, digitally raise your hand, and I think most of the city, you know, us with the city are used to doing that. I noticed that the mayor had her virtual hand up first, so if it's okay, could we hear from her first?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see that, so I don't, I don't know how to.
Participants.
Yeah, oh, now I see it. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mayor Cuffusy.
Thank you. I just wanted to tell Julie, if she wouldn't mind just shooting me an email with some of the, well, with your concerns and with the addresses of where those sidewalk disconnects are, I'll take a look at it. So it's just michelle@provo.org.
Thank you very much.
All right.
I appreciate it.
Over.
Yeah, I don't know if Mr. Harding wants to go first. Him, and then I'll go.
Thank you. The point I wanted to make, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, it's been a while since I've heard this, but I believe the state themselves set aside a good chunk of money for the Safe Routes to School program. And so if we can properly go through the steps of the Safe Routes to School program, we can get those sidewalks, we can get some of these, particularly the higher price tag projects, we can get state money, so we're not, you know, fighting the $25 million backlog, you know, and fighting other areas. That if we use this program correctly, we can actually funnel some more money to these problem spots and get it done quicker. So I think that's another reason why, if everyone works together, we can really see a good benefit from this.
All right, go ahead, Ms. Ellsworth.
Yeah, I just really appreciate what we're learning about this process and everyone's mutual desire to improve it, and I'm as well invested in that. I do spend time in Southwest Provo. I go there about once a week or more. I'm happy to go on a walking tour with you, if that's helpful, or a biking tour, or any kind of tour, to look at some of these sites and address specific concerns, if that's helpful.
Thank you. I'll get in touch with you.
I just wanted to follow up. We do have a policy 6605 that we stated a bunch of this a couple of years ago, stating like the timeline of when we should enter Safe Roots information. I wanted to just make sure, Stephanie and Keith, can you guys follow up with 6605 to make sure that we're up to date on that one?
Yes, thank you.
All right, is there any more information, or anybody wants to say anything more about the Safe Roots and Crosswalks? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to a discussion on Google Fiber with Lane Parker.
Thank you. Board members, council members, wonderful to be with you. Recognize that a couple of you, we won't see anymore after this regular meeting, and thank you for your service and all you've done for the schoolchildren in Provo. So it's hard to believe, we are now about seven and a half years since the Google Fiber deal was announced. I will never forget the blustery day on the top of the convention center when the announcement was made, and all the good work we've done together with elected officials and staff and others on creating the opportunity that Google Fiber has brought to our community. So I'm going to highlight just a couple of things that I think might be on your mind. We didn't get specific details as to what you wanted to talk about today. But let me just respond to a couple of questions that we frequently get about Google Fiber at this stage of the, of the project. So as you'll recall, part of the contract we negotiated with Google Fiber was offering a free five-meg service to any resident that wanted it for a period of seven years. And of course, that time period is now, you know, the seven years also coincides with seven years since the signing of the contract. So let me just say a couple of things about that. First of all, the seven years that's involved here is from the date of the install in a given structure. And so if, if a person signed up for the free Google Fiber and the installation was done in 2018, it's seven years from 2018, not seven years from 2013. And so the seven years is sort of rolls over, you know, over a period of time. And so as we've met with Google Fiber and Dixon and I were on the phone with the Google Fiber folks just a couple of weeks ago, we continue the managing that relationship. They have no immediate plans to disconnect folks, even if their seven years number has been passed. They don't want to create a circumstance where they're leaving residents high and dry without, without service. And certainly as we've, you know, Provo is one of the most connected cities with broadband in the country. Our penetration rate is way over 90%, probably 96, 97% of households in Provo have access to broadband. And so we don't want to lose that element of digital inclusion that's been such an important component for you and for us. I don't think there's any question that at some point in the future, the free service will deprecate and not be available. We don't know exactly when that is, but we've been working hard with Google to come up with some alternatives. Some of those might include a lower cost, lower speed option where folks might want to upgrade from their five-meg service to something a little bit faster, but very cost effective. And it could also be some sort of income qualified or some standard by which a free or very heavily reduced cost service would be made available, even if you didn't subscribe to the, to a Google Fiber offering. So we're continuing to work on that component. Google Fiber has assured us that until we have those plans in place, that they will not be disconnecting anyone who's recipient of the free service. That being said, as we've gone through the COVID experience the last several months, it's been pretty clear that if you've got a family with a couple of schoolchildren and laptops and, and people working from home, five-megs doesn't function very well. And so there has been a significant number of people in the district and the city who have upgraded already from the, from the free service. We also think there's quite a few folks in, in the city that took advantage of the free service but are using it in a very limited way. So it may well be that it's their guest Wi-Fi. So they may be subscribing to Comcast or CenturyLink or Utah Broadband or some other service. And because it's free, they're using it kind of as their, as their visitor Wi-Fi. And so, so as the process rolls along and we come up with other alternatives, I think we'll kind of be able to separate out who's, who's relying on this for their basic internet service and those who are not. So that's kind of the process. We'll be glad to keep you informed as, as options develop and as, as Google begins their process of trying to figure out what are the best alternatives for residents for whom the, the five-meg service is a, is a critical component of their internet access. The other thing we get asked about periodically and in part because, because Google Fiber has been communicating with their customers is there's a really strong effort on the part of Google Fiber to try to move people from the Internet Protocol TV, the IPTV sort of cable option to more of a streaming alternative. And if you're a Google Fiber customer, you follow them at all, even nationally, this has been an effort that they've been making nationally over the last several months. They've offered to customers some, some discounts as well as longer term, you know, more than just the seven-day trial that's typically offered to potential streaming customers. And so I think we'll, I think we'll see, just reading the tea leaves on that one, I think we'll see continuing effort at trying to move Google Fiber customers from the IPTV sort of cable option to more of a streaming platform. Again, with some discounts and some opportunities to, to take advantage of that. So, so with that, let me just also suggest, I know there have been some concerns we've heard about the Google contract with the school district. Unlike the city's contract where there are some expiration dates, the school district has a perpetual contract with Google Fiber to run school services over the Google Fiber network. That was done in exchange for, for your allowing the, them to continue to use the Google Fiber huts that were located on school property around the city. And, and so that's not anything you need to worry about. Whatever happens with our contract will not impact what's going on with the school district's independent contract with Google Fiber. And then finally, we do get questions occasionally about is Google losing their interest in Google Fiber? Is, you know, with all the changes happening at the Alphabet parent company, what's the commitment to Google Fiber? We, again, continue to communicate very regularly with them. You may have read recently that they expanded the Salt Lake City offering into the city of Mill Creek. They'll be actually building a network in the city of Mill Creek in Salt Lake County. They, while they haven't announced any new metros in recent months, they are continuing to build in Kansas City and Austin and, and other places where they've made announcements and where they're in the process of building. So we're, we're pretty comfortable based on our communications with them and just watching the industry that Google Fiber is here to stay. So if that gives you any comfort or consolation about any rumors that might be floating around about Google's continuing commitment to the fiber option, they are doing some high-speed wireless in some of their communities. They acquired a Silicon Valley company. And they'll be, I think, in some of the new buildout areas, they'll be looking at sort of a mesh Wi-Fi system or a 5G system that will, that will probably not quite replicate fiber, but will give fairly high speed in some of those areas. So again, they're continuing to innovate and look for opportunities. But our sense is that, that Google Fiber is, as an entity, is here to stay. So with that, that's kind of my update. I'd be happy to entertain any specific questions you might have about kind of what's happening on the Google Fiber front.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's, it's good to know. And some of that was new for me. So that's great.
Yes, thank you.
Always feel free to reach out. We're happy to help connect you to the right resources.
Right. Any further questions on that?
Thanks, Wayne.
Yeah, thank you, Wayne. Moving on, a discussion on community conversations by Board Member Partridge.
Thank you. So wanted to share with the council and the city staff the results from our bond election. And you can see here that it passed our request for a bond to rebuild the main portion of Timpview. It passed with a margin of 1.54%. So with over 36,000 votes, the margin was about 550 or so vote difference. So we are grateful that it passed. And the reason why this part of the agenda is called community conversations is because I just wanted to talk about with it being set the small margin for a project that had to be done with the school that is moving, that the state engineer said we were going to not be able to ensure the building if we did not do something immediately on it. I feel that we need to have some conversations with our community. And when I say conversation, I mean an actual conversation where we can hear from them as to why the vote was what it was, not only that specifically, but also we have other needs in our district. We still will need to rebuild Wasatch Elementary, Dixon Middle School. And I'm concerned when we had a project that was so needed and so urgent that it barely passed, I'm concerned for the students and the teachers at Wasatch and Dixon and how we can be able to support the needs for a safe building for them. And I feel that the way we can get there is to talk about this as a community. And that's why I'm bringing it up with city is because even though it's a district, or district buildings, it is a city, a city concern. And so I would like to ask, you know, how can the city support us in having these conversations? I know that you have reached in certain areas of communication that are greater than what the district can do. Wondering what kind of support we might be able to have in reaching out to the community to set up different conversations with them or other ideas that council, city, or board members have about how we can, can move forward as a community and discuss this and come to a, not a consensus, but find a way to move forward to, to create plans to be able to address our other buildings as well.
Hey, Mr. Hoben has his hand up.
Hey, thanks. Hi, Jennifer.
Hello.
I think, I wonder, do we have a sense? It seems to me like maybe the, the people, the community don't trust the way the school board is spending money or something along those lines. I'm not exactly sure. But have you all, do you all have a sense at all for why there is such pushback? Was there, was there some sort of event or something that happened that people lost trust in how the school board or school, you know, district was spending money or anything like that? I know that might be kind of a sensitive subject to bring up, but I'm just, I'm just curious if there's something to that.
I've been in several PT meetings where we've talked about it a little. And I think right now it's a lot of speculation as to why. And I think that's one reason why we need to have the conversation is, is to know for sure. But I think there's several different reasons. I think some people are just tired of taxes going up and didn't understand that it was going to go up either way. I think some people didn't see the urgency of Timpview and thought that if they voted against it and thought, oh, Timpview's fine, didn't realize it needed to be done. I think there is some distrust from some people towards the district. I don't know. Does anyone else have any other answers for Mr. Hoben? McKay?
So, yeah, I think, you know, you can look at our margin and you can look at the city's margin for the city center. Awfully close. Did they not trust the city? I think that, that we, we've come into sort of a generational problem where we had some really optimistic folks in the 50s that built all the schools at all the same time. They built all the city infrastructure. We had, you know, they were really optimistic and civic-minded, this greatest generation. And everything is aging out from the city, city center to the sewer system to our schools. And so here this optimism that really earned the public almost a, a little bit of a, a engagement vacation because there wasn't always a project up. There was, they had this optimistic generation that took care of Provo for a very, very long time. And then when all these things come all together, they go, oh, that doesn't happen in every community. That, there must be something wrong. Somebody's mismanaged this. And I guess that you can understand that a little bit. But also just, just trust in institutions overall. I think that, that while you were going for a bond, when, when we surveyed, they said, we trust you, we, we trust you more. We had passed a bond, we trust you more. When we go for a bond, they say, oh, we trust the city more. They're not asking for money. Whoever is, is not asking for money is the trusted group, is for sure. And, and, and part of it is just, just working. You know, we, we do need to, to work together, you know. We recognize that there were some fire stations, a fire station needed to be replaced, a police facility needed to be replaced, the city center needed to be replaced, sewer system needs to be replaced. There's, there's going to be continuing needs in infrastructure in the city. And if we can just, you know, begin to come together that, you know, we've, we've done pretty, pretty well. A majority of our inventory of schools are in really great shape. And with Timpview being taken care of, another one, we have two outliers. But a lot of our schools, there, there will be some needs coming up. Beyond the replacement of those two schools, you're going to help the city grow, obviously. It looks like there's going to be a need for another elementary school. I think maybe a good place to start on this discussion is if, if we're, if, I don't know if this, if the city, I know the school district hasn't undertaken any great demographic change or projection research in a, in a while on what, where we're going to grow, how we're going to grow. People have lots of questions about will we need a third middle school or can we do some other things? There's going to be some discussions to be had because, you know, for the price of real estate in Provo, and I think we're sort of out of real estate for schools. But we'll need to talk about maybe reconfiguring our schools as, to respond to that. Maybe adding seventh grade back to our elementaries on our current and keeping and moving ninth grade to a middle school and eighth, ninth, and as our high schools get bigger, maintaining two high schools and growing, you know, in small additions rather than large school investments as we grow, might be a response to our real estate problem. But all of these things are, I think we have to realize that almost everything is an ask. And any public ask right now, be that schools or which presidential candidate or which governor's candidate is highly contested. Every ask is highly contested now. And so if, I think Jennifer is wise in making an invitation that at least we start in this new environment where everything is highly contested. How do we start getting everybody on the same page at least that we can, we can sort of assign community needs, what benefits a community overall? And, and go from there.
Thanks, Melanie. I just wanted to talk to a couple of those things that McKay brought up. So he's exactly right. The growth is coming and we've got projections at the city that we can share with you. One thing that we all have in common with the bond, I mean, I, Superintendent and I, and actually Jennifer was a huge part of the first bond we ran when I was the board president of public education. And, and so much of it is education. But as I've stepped into this new position, so much of it is the people before us. And it was the same in the school. We're so proud to say, you know, we have, we have not raised taxes in 10 years or we have not gone out for a bond in 15 years. That was such a sense of pride for so many elected officials. And yet it does us, it does not serve us well at all, as we're finding out. Everything is needing to be replaced now. Everything is hitting into, going into this crisis state where had those that came before us would have owned it and spaced it out and phased it a little bit, it would have done us a great favor. And so I get it, we're all in the same boat when it comes to that. But I do want to offer up anything on our side. We do, when, as Jennifer was speaking to, how can we get out to the public? We have channels, I have channels that I would be more than willing to share and get on and, and start. I have a conversation with Kafusi that gets a lot of people listening and looking and, and starts a lot of dialogue. And starts a lot of dialogue. I'm happy to offer that up. Just whatever we can do to help, um, we're here to help because. Again, the growth's coming. Previous elected officials did us no good by kicking the can down the road. And now it's all falling into our laps and we have to go out and educate and try and defend and. And it's, it's not fun. You, people hear the word bond and they just go to tax immediately in their mind and then vote no. So, um, we can get together and work together. That's all I wanted to say. And then I'm going to be quiet. Because it's not my meeting, it's the city council. So that's it for me.
Right, Mr. Harding and then, uh, Board Member Rash.
Uh, thank you. Um, I heard a question earlier, you know, how, how can the city support? Um, you know, I, I appreciate, uh, the mayor's words here. I, I, I think we are very willing to, to support. Um, if you have requests or, or whatever, um. I, this, this past, uh, fall, um. Or the, this past election, I, we, we issued a statement, I believe. Remember if it was a resolution or at least a statement and we pushed it out through, through our channel. So I, I, I do feel like. Uh, the council did try to support the, this bond however we could. Um, now we also, you know, supported things like the, uh, Prop nine on the, the, the form of. Yeah, the county commission, sorry, that the county government, uh, forum. And, and that failed spectacularly. So just because we have channels does not necessarily mean that. Um, we're particularly persuasive. Um, but, but I, my feeling is similar, very similar to, to the mayors that, you know, uh, we, we, we love to partner with you to. Use whatever we can to help get the message out. I, I, I feel like this is a genuine question, so I will, will venture, um, some, some thoughts on it. Uh, I hope that they're helpful. If they're not, then disregard it or whatever. Uh, there may be, uh, one or two others that it might, might be better to talk about offline, but, um. You know, if, if you are kind of doing that soul searching, which I think is awesome because, you know, it passed. So, so to do that soul searching, I think is great, you know? Particularly when you, when, when it passes and I think it, it gets you, puts you well positioned for the future if, if you follow through with this, but. Um, you might ask yourself, you're like. What was the last bond that the, that, that, that the school district did that had broad support? And I don't, is it six years ago now? Um. But I, I feel like that one, the, 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 the community really rallied around. And if, if I remember it correctly, and I, I only had my perspective on it. Um, that, that, the, the school district was, was asking for a certain amount and the community response was so strong. That it was revised upwards, um, and still passed with a lot of support. Um, and so you might want to look back and say, okay, what, how was that different? Now, there, there could be a lot of things. The school. Uh, board may have done things differently. The school district may have done things differently. It, there was obviously different circumstances around, you know, what, what the community was, was, was dealing with at the time, but, um. I think, uh, my impression, I, I heard from various community members when we would. Talk about the bond this, this last time and some of the community members were not aware of it. And, um, the, the impression was perhaps that, that the school district slash board. You know, kind of felt like it was a no brainer and maybe didn't need as much, uh, publicity and, and as much effort to. To, to sell the, the bond to the public. Um. I don't know if that's true or not, but that was an impression that, that I heard from, from several people, um, and that might have, have had an effect. Um. The other, the other thing that I've heard, um, as I've gone to neighborhood meetings and whatnot over, over, uh, the last three or so years. Um. There was, there was, with some, I'm sure this is not, you know, universal in the community, but there, there were some that, that felt like. Um, the school board slash district. Um, particularly because you, because I think you guys did such an amazing job of six years ago, really, really explaining the needs and, and whatnot. Um, they, they, they felt like when the school. Board and district needed the, the public to vote for something, you know, they kind of needed that. Then there was a really good effort to communicate and other times when it was just some tax, um. Property tax changes, um. Then the, the, the school district seemed less receptive to input. And so, so that was just, again, I heard it a few different places. Um, but it was like, you know, when they need something from us, they're, 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 they're really communicative. When they don't really need a vote from us. You know, it's just like, well, we're just going to do what we're going to do. It was, was, was the feeling. And then, uh, there, there were some that felt. That they've, were, were sold one thing with that bond six years ago and got something different. And so I think that may have eroded. Um, some of, some of that trust now. There were, there were good reasons that were. You know, there, there, there was reasons behind some, some change of plans. But if those reasons weren't communicated, someone who's not paying close attention just says, well. Yeah, I voted for one thing and, and got something else. So that may have been it. And then the, the last thing that I would suggest is. Um. You know, this is just one perspective from the, from the community, but, um. Sometimes I, I personally have not, I, I, as much as I pay attention, which is not a, a ton, there's, there's other things, but. I feel like I pay attention at least. Maybe the average of a, of a, of a, of a Provo citizen. Um, I, sometimes I've missed the long range vision. Um, and maybe this is because I've been so involved with the city stuff. And so I see many of our. You know, 50 year plans or 30 year plans or 10 year plans or five year plans. But sometimes I, I don't feel that that's communicated to me at least. A long-term vision of the, of the district. What is our plan? You know, to address. These needs 10, 15 years out. Um. There's times where it feels like, uh, these plans are kind of held close to the chest and like, well. You know, we, we think we're going to do this, but, but we're not letting people know yet. Um, and, and the other perception is, is perhaps we just kind of lurch from crisis to crisis, you know, six years ago. Oh, man. And, and for all the reasons we've talked about, I'm just, but I'm, I'm just trying to get at what the public perception might be. We, 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 we just kind of lurch from. You know, we've got, we've got this crisis. We've got to deal with it right now, that, that six years ago. And, and then. You know, four years later, oh, we've got this crisis. Um, you know, it's like, well, where was this crisis two years prior when we were. And we were doing some of these things. And again, there's reasons for this, but, but if. If you're looking for perhaps why that the, the, the community didn't support this greater. That, that might be just another perception that, that we, we don't have that long range vision that's being at least. Being communicated and, and we just kind of go from crisis to crisis. And so. Maybe having that longer range plan, uh, might give more confidence. Anyway, those are my thoughts.
Okay, uh, Julie Rash and then George Handley.
Um. I, I, I'm kind of battling with myself a little bit right now because this isn't the comment I raised my hand to make, so I'll make that in a minute. I have nothing to lose here, right? So what I'm about to say is Julie Rash, board member for another month. So don't let this be a reflection of my colleagues, but I'm feeling really accused right now. I am, I'm feeling really accused right now. Um, I understand what you're saying, but I also know that, that sitting on the city council. You guys get the same thing. We went out and did prior to that last bond. But 30, 40 meetings in the community, we were willing to talk, we were willing to engage. Um, we begged for that type of engagement so we could explain and, and, and where, where was the emergency four years ago? Well, it was still firmly on the mountain. And started sliding. We were, we were, um. Accused of running too strong of a campaign. Okay, so we needed to kind of step back and let the, let the citizens, you know, we, we put the information out there. It was out there. We need to temper what we were doing a little bit. Um, and so we did, we did, we, we talked to people. We put the information out what we could, we illustrated it. I still went to every school and I know my board, um, colleagues did as well. So I, I don't really need to, to go through step by step, everything that happened. I think there were some good points that, that Councilman Harding just made. I also think I, I would hope. I would hope that the relationship that we have and maybe the relationship that, that we're trying to build and make stronger would warrant. Maybe a considerable amount of, um, of. Collegiality, collegiality, maybe that, that an understanding both sides that sometimes. There, there's a body, um, trying to do the best we can do, uh, because I know the city council is too. I know the city council is and, and maybe try more of a, of a support. Cause I don't always feel that. I don't always feel that. Um, and I think. There is a, uh, the, the other bond, there was a, a pretty healthy misinformation campaign. That probably breded some mistrust. Um, among our citizens. It's my perspective. Again, don't hold this against any of my colleagues. I think also, and this is the, the point I was going to make, um, when I, when I first raised my hand. Um, I think in Provo. We have a pretty healthy east-west divide in this city. Um, we can go back and we can talk about why, we can talk about where that came from. We can even say it doesn't really exist. Um, I'm telling you it exists. So when, when we start looking at this, at the school district, you, you talk. Timpew and Provo High are really, really good way for our citizens to reflect that divide. And so, so if we look at the numbers, you will see, um, the west side hated the Timpew bond. I personally went to every one of the west side schools and said. That the question on the ballot this time is, are we going to pay this much or are we going to pay this much? For the bond, are we good? Like, we have to do it. We have to do it. And, um. They got that, they still didn't pass the bond because it was a, we hate Timpew. And I know that, that probably not as strong of a sentiment, but, but I know there's, there's not a huge interest in Timpew for Provo High. I know that the Timpew crowd supported the, the Provo High bond, which was fantastic. There were people over here, I mean, after that last bond, you guys, if you went to the Provo High Timpew football game, you saw people in the stands on the Provo High side. I was so embarrassed taunting the Timpew crowd. Saying, yeah, we aren't going to pay for your school, you know, ha, ha, your bond didn't pass. Like that exists. And I think we in the city as city leaders have to acknowledge that. We have to acknowledge that and we have to try to bridge that gap somehow. Um, I, I don't necess, I, I have some ideas, but I don't necessarily have, have the answers on how to do that. But it has to happen. And when you talk about where does the trust come from? Well. Or, 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 or how, how's the trust been eroded over on this side of town? I think that's a big piece of it. I think that's a big piece of it. I have reached out to, again, as a. To, to a couple of councilmen and not even had a response. Not even had somebody say, oh, thanks, thanks for letting us know. So, so that's the experience that a lot of my neighbors are having as well. I'm guessing that, that there are people on the other side of town that feel that too. So this isn't all just about, about what's going on over here, but that's a big piece of it. Um. That, that's all I'm going to say. I, I do appreciate the, the, the help from the city. I know that this relationship is, is massively important. Um, I'm hopeful that things will get better. I really am. Um, and I know we have the capacity to do that. And I think that there's the interest to do that too. Um. So I'll stop talking now. Thanks.
Go ahead, Mr. Handley and then Miss, uh, Board Member Partridge.
Thank you, Julie. I'm, I'm glad you spoke your mind, um, and it doesn't, uh, it reflects well on you anyway. So you don't have to worry about your colleagues in that case. So I think, I think that kind of honesty is important. Um, I'll just say a couple of things. I mean, I think, I think McKay has identified, I mean, I think there. There might be strategic things that need to be thought through as I think is implied in the question, but I do think. We have to face the reality that Julie and McKay both just described that there's a, there, there's, there are increasing divisions in the, in the city. And there is, uh, a growing distrust, uh, with institutions, with government. Um, and I think the mayor also highlighted the fact that that's a, that has a history. That now is coming back to bite us a little bit in terms of, um, the costs of things. I think, I, I don't know how to do this, but I think the narrative. Has to change, um, in which we see these things as investments. Um, yeah, i- in the future and that we're, we're investing in our children and our, in our grandchildren. And that we're doing this as an act of service to the public and to future generations. And I just think we have to. Beat that drum over and over and over again, because it's, it's amazing to me why, how often. People will vote for the thing that actually costs more money. In the name of not wanting to spend any money, right? Uh, we almost, that almost happened with your bond. It happened with the, the county government, uh, 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 vote just this last, uh. Uh, last month. Um, and, and all of the things that we're paying for right now, uh, or, or needing to pay for are because of that refusal to pay earlier. So it just costs more money to do things. So I don't know how, but I think public education about. What it takes to, to have a city. And have a public school system. And what it means and why that's valuable and why these things are, um, what make a community great are. Uh, really crucial to, um, to the, the narrative, to, to the kind of community we want to establish. And I, again, I. There's not time to go into all the details on that, but I think that's what we're battling. And I don't think we should, I, I could, should kid ourselves about how hard it is. It's, it's. I think we're at a crisis point with regard to this kind of public trust. And, you know, I know people will throw, uh, stones at you and at us and say, well, you guys lost our trust because of X, Y, or Z. And we might feel like that's not fair. Um. But that's also the reality. We've just got to fight that perception every single day that we are worthy. Of trust and that we need to, uh, we need to get people to buy into. The decisions that we're trying to make. So anyway, I think, I think we're all kind of saying the same thing, uh, but I, I just want to. You know, e- express my support for, um. For you guys and for public schools generally, uh, as an idea. And, um, and that I hope we can be unified in, in, in that message, uh, and, and I, and I hope that we can do. More on our end to show that support to you and lend that, uh, help when better communication and, and. Better information needs to get to into the hands of voters. Um, uh, but, but I mean, you know, as we learned, not only with the county vote, but also with the mask mandate and some other things, there's just so much. There, there's so much misinformation and there's counter narratives that people. Will grab a hold of and no amount of reasoning can shake them from it. Uh, so there's that too, which is. Maybe not the best of news either, but that's, that's the reality that we're, we're up against. Uh, we're just, uh, I, I just want to say I'm, I, I think we're with you in this and, and we want to. Uh, do everything we can to move forward in a positive way.
Thank you. Go ahead, Board Member Partridge.
Thanks. Um, well, thank you for everybody's input. I know our time is short and I didn't necessarily mean. Um, for us to get on a discussion about the whys, because like I said, that's a lot of speculation right now, but I think, um. The important thing is to involve our community. And do it in a way where they can give voice to. Not only why certain votes or whatever were made previously, but to have. Um, to become a stakeholder and to help us. Have the conversations about moving forward, that when individuals invest in it. It's a lot harder to say I've, I put my stake in this camp here, there's that camp over there. But instead, if we bring everybody together and talk about it and find solutions together, I think that will get a lot more investment. Um, from our community. I think that's a great thing to do regarding our schools, but I think. In time, this can be applied to lots of different community kinds of things, uh, that is we bring people together and have honest discussions. Um, and understanding, I think, understanding of the issues will increase for everybody and we can find those long-term solutions too. So. Um, I think we'll try to figure out kind of what we would like to do to start those conversations and then reach out, um, to city. To see how you can help us advertise and get people, uh, knowing about them and able to participate in them. So thank you.
Okay, um, seeing that there's no more hands raised, uh, are there any other comments? All right. Uh, next we need to have a discussion on future agenda topics. So this is where people who've been on. The board or, you know, part of the, uh, council can say, you know, these are the things. Worth talking about. So if you have ideas, please go ahead and let us know. Go ahead.
I, I, I think, you know, with some preparation, um, I think it would be, uh.
I, I, I think, you know, with some preparation, I think it would be great if, if some of the information that the mayor referenced about growth trends, where that's going to happen. And we could, we could, on the same agenda, talk about our teacher retention and teacher salary. Because I'm sure that there's some general interest in that, but the growth is, is critical to us in, in managing our budget well and being able to plan and be able, able to lock in that 30 and 40 year objective. And if, if we were all working off the same page of that, that would be very helpful.
I'd also like to suggest that perhaps in response to Councilman Harding's comments, maybe we could get Mark Wheeler to present whether in, whenever our next one is or the one after that about what the long-term plan is for facilities. And again, that would piggyback nicely onto what McKay was mentioning about long-term demographic changes and planning and those kinds of things.
Are there other things that we've talked about in past that we not necessarily don't remember bringing up? You know, Mr. Parker, you might have some hindsight on that.
In, in terms of things we've talked about in the past that might be good to refresh, is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, this is what I'm just thinking so that we can make sure that, you know, we're staying on good topics here when we, when we meet. So.
Yeah, I think one, one of the areas that we've talked about frequently in these meetings historically, and it comes back to the superintendent's point about growth trends. And that's been about, you know, kind of how we, how we go through, make decisions about zoning, how we respond to applicants who come in, maybe thinking a little bit around, you know, are, are there, are there some things we can do in terms of expenditure of city funds or incentivizing certain kinds of development that brings substantial benefit to the school district? And again, we've spent some time talking about redevelopment agencies and those kinds of things, but and, and then looking at, you know, what do we do with commercial growth? And again, recognizing that that's a substantially better revenue source from property tax for you than, than is residential development. And it brings less demand on the district and, and higher potential returns. So just around, you know, economic development in general and then development, where we're seeing the development demands in the city and what are some of the constraints around how we make decisions? Those I think have been some of the more engaging topics we've done over the years in these joint meetings.
I, I think another sort of in, in, if the city could help us see a little bit along with demographics, some of the plan that you have, you know, when is the next sewer, you know, 80 million, billion dollar? When's the next bridge that needs to come in that will be competing against a, a school or a parking lot or, or something that, that we'll need to ask the voters for? I think that we need to, we, we've sort of had a informal agreement on, on truth and taxation that we wanted to go on and even years. The legislature continues in, you know, if, if I'm invited to a legislative meeting, I'm going to hear the phrase local effort at the Capitol a lot. It, it seems like, you know, that there's interest from the Capitol about, about school districts and municipalities making use of their levies and, and, and not coming to the Capitol and lobbying for teacher salaries or other things. And so if we could, we could find a spot, maybe the next time we meet or the time after to talk about our truth and taxation and keeping up just with inflation schedule, that might be helpful or the strategy there and refresh that conversation. I think those would be some good things.
It's a very good idea.
Jennifer?
Um, I was thinking and maybe council members can weigh in on this, but it might be helpful for city council to learn a little bit more about especially our Title I schools, kind of the demographics, how we support not only our students academically, but the social services we provide to our students and their families in need.
I agree. That would be really helpful, especially as we look at the consolidation of housing types in different parts of town and the associated trends.
And who knows if, where we're going to be here in a few months, but I was, I spoke to council back in July about what was going on at that time regarding COVID. And it seemed to be well received and I was told that council would like to hear from it again. But I didn't really feel like I wanted to invite myself to a future council meeting. I kind of forced my way in on one of them and I didn't want to do that again. But if, if at some point in the future, city council would like to hear updates on schools as we deal with COVID and those kinds of challenges, just let us know and we can get that on the agenda. With a little bit of good advance time, we can clearly get a, get a presentation together for you.
You know, one, one thing we really haven't ever done before, which I think might be really fascinating, particularly for the city council members, is to talk about how schools are financed. What are the different levies? How does that work? What's the way did pupil unit? How does that play into the equation? And again, our, our revenue sources, I mean, they're complicated, but they're, they're child's play compared to what you have to deal with. And maybe that would be just, you know, later in next year, maybe just add it on an agenda sometime to do just a school finance 101. I think that'd be really interesting to council members.
Great.
Okay, is there any other suggestions or looks like not? I really appreciate the time that the council and the school board got together for this meeting. I feel like it was very, it, it was very helpful and I appreciate everybody attending. So with that, I think we can adjourn the meeting. So thank you for coming.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.